Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October Carlisle Borough Council meeting. Before we go any further, I entertain a motion to allow Councillor Stube to participate remotely due to childcare.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries, welcome Councillor Stube.
Thank you.
And now we'll continue with you doing the moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, I just ask that everybody take the next sixty seconds in silence, reflecting in whatever way they feel most appropriate. And now the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councillor Stube. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Krampsey?
Here.
Ms. Fulham-Winston?
Here.
Mr. Hicks?
Here.
Ms. Landis?
Here.
Mr. Schultz?
Here.
Mayor Scott?
Here.
Mr. Stube?
Here.
And Ms. Hayes?
Here.
All right, thank you very much. Next up is opportunity for citizens and visitors to be heard. I do not believe we have any scheduled speakers this evening, so we'll turn over to our audience here in Borough Hall first. If anyone would like to address Borough Council, now is the time to do so. Yes, ma'am. If you can please come to the podium, we really want folks to speak into the microphone because it's hard for the folks online to hear, and sometimes the folks in Borough Hall as well.
I'm Margaret Parsons, Government Affairs Director for Greater Harrisburg Association of Realtors, and I'm not sure if the rental ordinance is on the agenda for tonight, but I did want to say that we had met with Borough officials prior to the pandemic and discussed the issue, and there was some discussion about it being revisited in a few years to determine its effectiveness and if any changes needed to be made. And so I would just ask that that be put into the draft of the ordinance before it's advertised for the public.
All right, thank you very much. And while we're on that subject, I have a statement from Mr. David Lanza of D R H O. He's also an attorney for Carapoa, and he asked that his statement that was submitted on August seventh, I'm sorry, October seventh, be submitted for the record without objection. It will be so ordered. Now, moving on, oh, Madam Secretary, is anyone online who would like to address Council?
There is none.
All right, seeing none, we'll move on to, oh. Yes. Okay. All right, before I look down again, all right. Next up, we have a presentation from our Finance Director, Mr. Richard Jude Daye, on the Borough's third quarter budget status. Richard, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councillors, for this opportunity. So this is our third quarter status update. This will be through September thirtieth. We're going to go ahead and get started with our general fund. Down at the bottom, we have a summary of our revenues and expenses as they are presented through the third quarter. I also included twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and twenty twenty through the third quarter, so you can see where we compared during those years. Right now, the revenues and expenses are meeting expectations. Revenues are at seventy-seven percent collected compared to budget. Our real property tax revenue is at ninety-seven percent collected. That's our largest revenue source within the general fund. It's about five million of that thirteen million budgeted. So that's good news and pretty typical at this point in the year. The areas that were underperforming that stood out were fines and forfeits at seventy-six thousand. Included in that was, of course, the rental housing inspection for this year. We didn't implement it at this point, so that's why the revenue is down. You'll see an offsetting expense being down as well there. In addition, our interest is down significantly, sixty-nine thousand. We had a significant drop in the interest rates. In twenty-twenty-one, we were at one point seven-nine percent, and we're currently at less than one percent, at point zero-four percent. So it's close to nothing that we're getting from our cash. And then on track is our licenses and permits, our charges for services, other revenue, and of course, transfers. The good news is our licenses and permits, which is our building permits and everything, that's back on track. Last year, that was suffering. And then our charges for services includes a lot of our parks and rec, and that is back on track, which is good news. For expenses, we've seen some savings. We had budgeted to not fill positions through half the year, and some of those positions are still unfilled, so we're generating savings there. And our overtime is lower than typical. We're about thirty thousand lower than we have been historically, and fifty thousand less than we had anticipated in the budget at this point. And then a fun fact, our debt service and transfer activity has been paid to date. When I was preparing this, I thought that was interesting, but I think it's kind of boring now, so if you are, you know, at dinner and you want to share with the fam that the budgeted expenses for debt services happened, that's.
That's always a highlight of my family dinners, Richard, so.
Okay, we'll move on to our utility funds. That's our water fund, stormwater fund, and sewer fund. They're all meeting expectations. Down in that summary, at the bottom there, you'll see that we're not at seventy-five percent, and that's just how these funds are built. Most of the revenue will be captured towards the end as we bring money back into the year that it was earned. So right now, they're meeting expectations. However, even though the revenues are at a level that they should be, that doesn't mean that we're actually getting the cash, so our collections are down. We'll see that on the next slide. As for expenses, again, we had budgeted to not fill positions. Some of them are still open, so we're generating additional savings there, which is good news. And then we also are generating savings from debt service. We had budgeted for interest payments in twenty-twenty-one for the new debt that we issued, had we issued it early in the year, but we held off, so all that's going to be seen in twenty-twenty-two, so we're getting some good savings there. Okay, this slide, this is talking about our outstanding balances to be collected. We've seen this before. Down at the bottom right, you'll see our quarter-two aged accounts. That is what we were looking at last quarter, and then I put quarter-three to kind of see where we're heading. Not a whole lot has changed, which is not bad news. It went down a little bit, about seventeen hundred dollars in terms of total outstanding accounts. We did see an increase in the number of accounts that are lienable. It increased by forty-three accounts, primarily in the rental and residential types. So, you know, we're continuing to promote our rental assistance program where anybody who's renting and interrears on their utility payments, they can seek assistance in this program. The Redevelopment Authority is helping us with that, so we urge you to participate if you haven't, to reach out, and, you know, we can get you in contact with the right person. We're also working hard with the Redevelopment Authority to implement a homeowner assistance program. This will be similar to that rental assistance, but for property owners who live in the property. You know, with these past two accounts at eighty-one residential, you know, this might offer them some relief for the utility bill. Okay, moving on to our solid waste fund. This fund, we had anticipated that we were going to use reserves through the year, and as you'll see down at the bottom, in the summary, we are expecting to do that. Right now, it says we're at ninety thousand use of reserves. We have not collected our forty-five thousand dollar recycling grant, so that should drop a little bit, but I still think we're going to end up somewhere around that eighty-seven when all is said and done. The twenty-twenty data, you'll see that we were down at seventeen thousand at this point in the year. What we heard from the audit last week was that we actually ended one hundred and seventy-six thousand using reserves. I don't think we'll reach that this year, but it will be close to that eighty-seven. Okay, moving on to our parking. We're down one hundred and seven thousand, our charges for services, that's our garage revenue, that's our meters, primarily, that go into that, so ninety thousand that were below expectations. Our lease and parking permit revenue is down. Last quarter, it was right on track, so we'll see how that ends during the year, but we're currently trending downwards. We did see some savings generated from wages due to reducing staffing hours in the first two quarters. We didn't have the garage fully staffed, and we've picked that up since then, but we have generated those revenues. That's everything I had in my report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Richard from Council? All right, I think we're good, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, we are at the consent agenda. The following is a list of routine items, which do not appear to be controversial in nature, and which probably do not require additional discussion. They can be acted on by one motion in their current form. If discussion is desired on any particular item, any member of Council or the public may request the item be removed from the consent agenda, and that item will be considered separately. I'll ask Council, is there anything on the consent agenda that a member of Council would like to be removed and considered separately at this point? Okay? Any member of the public see anything they don't like? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. And that's everything at the bottom of page one, including all of page two. Moving on to page three, the regular agenda, we have a tabled item. I move that Council remove from the table an ordinance amending the code of the Borough of Carlisle with respect to Chapter two-four-four, Vehicles and Traffic, to prohibit the parking of unhitched trailers at all times on public roads in the borough.
Second.
We have a motion with a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, that item is removed from the table. And now, I move that Council adopt an ordinance amending the code of the Borough of Carlisle with respect to Chapter two-four-four, Vehicles and Traffic, to prohibit the parking of unhitched trailers at all times on public roads in the borough.
Second.
We have a motion with a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be a roll call vote. Madam Secretary, if you please.
Mr. Krampsey?
Aye.
Ms. Fulham-Winston?
Aye.
Mr. Hicks?
Aye.
Ms. Landis?
Aye.
Mr. Schultz?
Aye.
Mr. Stube?
Aye.
And Mayor Scott?
Aye, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Next up is Mayor's Report, and this evening, Council has before it a letter which provides guidance to Senator Casey on key provisions in the budget reconciliation legislation currently pending in Congress right now. As members of the Transition Advocacy Project, it's important that we as leaders speak out now on programs and investments outlined in the letter, which are the most important to our community's future progress. If Congress passes the Built Back Better package, we will supercharge our economy per climate change and improve our transportation infrastructure, among many other things. Therefore, I ask that Council approve sending this letter to Senator Casey as these negotiations heat up, and ask for his support on the provisions outlined. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to add that especially the provisions regarding climate changes, there's really not a second path to get us to even get close to our goals. And that aspect in particular, I think, is urgent, as we'll see reflected in the Council of the Parties Meeting in Glasgow later this month, where we'll talk about contributions that all nations need to make, but certainly the United States stands near the front line in need to reduce our emissions. So thank you for adding that and recognizing the importance of that in this letter.
Thank you very much, yes. Any further comments? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. And now, move on to the Second Mile Proclamation. In the Borough of Carlisle, there exist many individuals and organizations who go the extra mile when it comes to personal effort, volunteerism, and service. This is especially true of Borough employees and the many partner organizations who support Council's mission. Therefore, it's my pleasure to announce that November first, twenty-twenty-one, is proclaimed Extra Mile Day in the Borough of Carlisle. I wish to acknowledge all those in the community who are an inspiration to me and others up here on the dais in their efforts to make their neighborhoods, schools, towns, townships, and boroughs and cities a better place to live. Thank you. Now we move on to reports from committee. Up first, community planning and smart growth. Mr. Krampsey?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I have four items tonight. My first item, I'll make a motion that Borough Council may consider a waiver for the submission of a preliminary subdivision plan two-two-six dash nineteen for eight hundred Belvedere Street submitted by Pentara Engineering, Inc., on behalf of BT Carlisle LLC.
Mr. Krampsey makes a motion to consider a waiver for the submission of a preliminary subdivision plan. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, any further discussion on this item?
I'll just add, Mr. Mayor, for those that weren't able to come to the workshop last week, this is a pretty exciting project in that lot that's been vacant for a few years now, for, to build some work and live space units. Thanks.
Thank you very much. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.
All right, I will make a motion that Borough Council may approve a final subdivision plan for eight hundred Belvedere Street submitted by Pentara Engineering, Inc., on behalf of BT Carlisle LLC, for redevelopment of a point-seven-four acre parcel located on the southeast corner of Walnut Pond Road and Belvedere Street in the C four neighborhood commercial zoning district, subject to the applicant's acceptance and satisfactory resolution of the conditions listed herein.
Mr. Krampsey makes motion to approve a final subdivision plan. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you very much. I'll make a motion that Borough Council may consider a waiver of the submission of a formal land development plan, section two-two-six dash fourteen, two-two-six dash seventeen, and two-two-six dash twenty-one of the Saldau by the Carlisle Area School District for proposed minor improvements at Moreland Elementary School property at three-two-nine Wilson Street. Approval shall be subject to the applicant submitting a stormwater management plan acceptable to the Borough Engineer and executing a stormwater operation and maintenance agreement for the proposed stormwater improvements.
Mr. Krampsey makes a motion to waive the submission of a formal land development plan. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And last but not least, I'll make a motion, and then we'll open it up to discussion. I move that Borough Council may consider directing the Borough Solicitor to draft and advertise an ordinance amending Chapter one-nine-three of the Code of the Borough of Carlisle to provide for the registration and inspection of rental dwelling units, and amend Chapter one-twenty to provide for fees with respect thereto.
Mr. Krampsey makes a motion to direct the Solicitor to draft and advertise an ordinance. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, and I guess we'll have discussion.
Great, thanks, Mr. Mayor. For those of you that were able to join us last week, this motion to have the Solicitor redraft and advertise the rental inspection ordinance stems from IPN advertised the month prior to COVID and the emergency declaration, so there were updates to the ordinance mainly centering around the dates that were listed. Those had to be updated and changed, so the motion we have before us tonight would be to direct our Solicitor to advertise that ordinance in an updated form. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions, comments, or thoughts from Council. And I guess just a reminder for the public, tonight, the vote is to legally advertise the ordinance tonight, wouldn't be the vote to approve or deny the ordinance. All right, seeing none from Council, other public comment?
Yes, sir.
Colonel Joe Nunez, Seven Wellington Court. As may have you know, I've been involved with this for well over two years, and COVID has created a number of issues, and jumping back into this, I think, is premature as far as advertising it for comment. Let me explain. If the Borough Council wants to legitimately engage and consider opinions of stakeholders, it should reengage property owners and Borough manager and her staff as the Borough Council had initially directed. This happened about two years ago, and many sound and reasonable measures were incorporated with the draft rental housing ordinance. Unfortunately, after the Borough Council met in private, the Borough Council deleted many of these good measures, and the document, the ordinance, is not an accurate reflection of the coordination that occurred between a number of property owners and the Borough manager and her staff. Going back to the beginning of all this, I argue that a key principle of public administration was to provide incentives to those who comply with regulations and take action to sanction those who repeatedly violate regulations. As written today, the ordinance does not, I say again, does not have sufficient carrots to reward compliance, and does not have the support of property owners that I have been speaking with over the last month or two. The use of more incentives will increase the legitimacy of the ordinance, which I think is important, since we're the ones that have to bear it. It will reduce the inspection workload and cost, which is in the public interest, and I believe it'll do much to improve compliance. I would add that property owners are hurting from the rent moratorium. Many have received no rent or any type of government reimbursement as of now. I should also add that I had sent a number of items through the Borough Manager to the Borough Council. One was a letter that I had drafted about eighteen months ago. Another one was an article that was in the Patriot News that talked about the rising cost of property in general, the rising rents in the Harrisburg-Carlisle area, the lack of housing because a number of landlords are getting older, they're getting tired of dealing with various costs rising, dealing with tenants, dealing with local government, and they, a number of them, have sold their properties. So you have fewer rental properties in the borough that are available, the costs are going up, and these measures do nothing to help affordability for people of limited means, which has been a discussion topic in this body countless times, and I think is actually a legitimate concern. Our public health situation for the future is not clear. We are hopeful that vaccines and various measures taken will improve our situation, but we've gone through these peaks and valleys before, and I would caution the Borough Council from acting too quickly and then us winding up in another situation where it would be very hard to actually do an inspection. So I think it'd be prudent to move slowly on this, not to put a complete break on it, but to reengage, to rediscover these measures, to tweak some of these things so that they are reasonable, fair, and implementable. I also have concerns about inspectors, landlords, tenants, mass liability, and so forth, and that's going to have to be addressed even if things get better, because as far as I know from public health professionals that I have consulted with, you know, experts, they said we're still going to have to deal with variants and other pandemics in the future. It's just unavoidable. We can hope for the best, but we can't assume that, and I think we need to think about that. So finally, I'd just like to say that, and I mentioned this before, rental rates are rising. Costs imposed upon property owners get passed on to tenants, perhaps not immediately, but when leases are renewed, rates go up, and rental rates have been rising significantly. And I know that the borough is sympathetic toward tenants, not so much toward landlord or property owners. I think if we were restaurant owners, it'd be a different situation, but that's a whole nother kettle of fish. But we do provide a service. Many of us care deeply for our tenants. We take care of our properties. We take care of our properties. Some of us have had. Zero violations over a long period of time. And we think that the borough ought to. Take that into consideration more in the draft of this regulation that. It's a good start, but there's a lot more that needs to be done, and council should be very careful. About slashing and burning things that the Borough Manager and property. Owners have worked on because we're the ones that have been doing the work. If the Borough Council wants to go to these meetings, that'd be great. But that hasn't happened. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much for your comments. Um, any other? Um, public comment in Borough Hall, and then we will, uh, go to the folks online. Not seen any additional at the mo-, oh, yes. Um, if you could come up, yep, to the, to the podium, uh, name an address or name and place of business for the record.
Hi. Uh, my name is Dana Steffi. I spoke, uh, previously before, um, the COVID, uh, issue. Uh, I'm a landlord here in Carlyle, own quite a few properties. Um, and I just wanted to reinforce everything that he just said, plus. Um, I just wanted to bring it to your attention. Uh, we already have increasing rents due to COVID losses, just like he said. Every, uh, uh, there's also other increasing costs, taxes, water rates, everything. And I have already had to reduce my rental availability to HUD. I have some of my properties rented through the HUD program. And this year specifically, I've had to cut back on the number of HUD tenants I can accept. Because their rent rates no longer are in line with what I charge. Uh, and I need to charge these rates to stay in business. So I just want you to be aware that the more. Fees and hoops that have to be jumped through. For landlords, the higher our rates are, and you're going to get less participation with the HUD program. Um, also, I ask the council use the valuable input from our pre-COVID landlord manager meetings. And please take those to heart before deciding exactly what ordinances are going to be drafted and advertised. And I would also ask, to what end are we implementing these ins- new inspections and fees? And what is actually the end game we're trying to get at? Because I think we all want. A nice place to be able to advertise and live in. Or rent to tenants. We all have the same end game, but I don't think that installing these ordinances and fees is the right way to do it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else, uh, in Borough Hall? At the moment? Alright, Joyce, anyone on the Zoom? Thank you very much. Anyone else on council?
I'll, I'll chime in to provide some perspective, and I'm going to clarify what I think was perhaps a misstatement in, in one of the comments that council somehow met. In private, um, and, and amended the ordinance. That's entirely inaccurate. Um, it would be a violation of, of sunshine, uh, and this, this body does not violate sunshine. And I think this, this solicitor would, would be stomping up and down if he found, found, found out that we had. Um, so that's, that's inaccurate. You said council met in private. The council did not meet in private. Council did not meet in private. Okay, sure. So, um, just a cou- a couple of points. One, put this in, in perspective. Um, I've heard, um, folks complain about the cost of the program. So if, if you are a, a compliant, uh. Property owner. Uh, who, Colonel Nunez, I believe you are. Uh, I believe you're, you're, you're quite, uh, punctilious and you're in, in the care of the property. Um, and, and your, your tenants are better off for that. Someone like, like that is on a five-year cycle. Um, that five-year cycle per month per unit is, that, that's going to be a cost of two dollars and eight cents. Um, so do you, do you pass that two dollars and eight cents along to the tenant per month? Perhaps, perhaps you do. But it's two dollars and eight cents. If you are, um, uh, I'll use the term Colonel Nunez that you used in your, the comment that you passed along to, to, uh, to council. And the written comment, uh, 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 a slumlord, someone who winds up on, on the two-year cycle. Um, that per unit cost is per month is five dollars and twenty one cents. Not an exorbitant fee. Um, and these fees are in place. The end game of this is to ensure safety in rental properties. Um, and again, I, I think we have a vast majority of very good landlords, um, who take good care of the property. Um, and the ordinance that we began with. At the beginning, at the very beginning, um, is very different than the ordinance we have today. It's a product of those meetings, uh, that, that we, we directed and the Borough Manager had with, with, uh, property owners. Um, council has more than just property owners to look out for. Uh, we, we represent. A, a broad constituency. Um, and it's constituency that, yes, includes landlords. Um, and, and the suggestion that we don't appreciate what landlords bring. What is, the good landlords bring, bring to this borough is again inaccurate. I mean, we, uh, I, I think I can, I can. Speak for the entire council, uh, that we appreciate those that, that abide by, by code and abide by the law. Um, and appreciate what, what you all provide to, to those tenants. Unfortunately, I think the folks who show up here are probably the good ones, right? Um, so additionally, uh, uh, there's, there's no reason to continue to wait. Uh, we've, we've gone through this, we've had workshops, we've had discussion. Uh, COVID, we paused this for COVID. Um, there was a, there was an eviction moratorium in place, and that was part of the reason that we continued to pause that. That is no longer in place. Uh, we can certainly ensure that our inspectors are, are fully vaccinated. That should not be an issue, I believe, for our manager. Armstrong, right? Um, and, and the fact that the, the pandemic may, may go on, the, the work of public safety also. Needs to go on regardless. So, but I, I, I think the bottom line is the suggestion that this is a high-cost program. It's, it's purely not borne out by, but when you do the math. Um, and, and the need for public safety, when we know statistically. That the, the co- code issues that we encounter are disproportionately predominantly from, from rental properties. That we cannot. We cannot enter to inspect without a program like this that applies across the board. This, this is our, this is the tool, and we worked through these, those many months prior to the pandemic. To. To accommodate as much as possible what the needs of the landlords were. I was an advocate for that system that we have. That as, as much as we can. Does incentivize the good landlords to get on that five-year track and reduce costs as much as possible and it, and reduce the nuisance. As much as possible. I'm a business owner. I manage a business. I'm sensitive to those costs. Um, and, and I think what we have before us is, is the right, the right product.
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, Mr. Hicks, go ahead.
Thank you, uh, Councilor Ramsey. Just two items. One sort of larger, um. Reflection on Colonel Nunez's comment about. Taking a step back or a pause. One, one thing on a nu- numerous fronts that I am. Really proud of our Borough Manager and our local government is, is our ability to respond to things in real time. Um, you're right, we can't look into the future. We, we can't know what future variants are out there. Or even things unknown unknowns that might be out there. What I do know is that we have the borough staff that. Will adjust fire, um, as circumstances warrant. To, to try to say we can't or shouldn't take action because we can't predict the future. Um, it is a little, a little bit more, more than I could, I can tolerate. We, we do have to move forward on our priorities, but I am certain. If the circumstances warrant, we would make adjustments to this or any program that put an undue burden on anyone. Second point I want to say is. You know, policy is carrots and sticks, and, um, you know, since I've been on council, um. Uh, uh, came, came on a little bit after the discussions on this, I, I've seen a lot of emphasis on, on carrots. Um, in fact, we set aside. Um, I believe it's fifty thousand dollars American relief, um, funding, um, rescue plan funding. To help landowners come in compliance, uh, with code violations to actually, in fact, address. Um, issues that may, um, uh, fall under this, this, uh, potential, uh, ordinance. So, um. I hear you. I, I am sensitive to making sure we have a balance. Um, I am confident our, our staff is striking that balance. Uh, uh, on this and, and most issues. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other questions, comments, thoughts? Alright, Mr. Mayor, I believe we have a, a motion and a second. Yes, I'm sorry, can you come back to the microphone just for our folks watching at home? Thank, thank you.
Mr. Nunez, you'll have an opportunity to address council again at the end of the meeting. Uh, realizing that, uh, new business, the other time I may have misspoke. It's an opportunity for public comment in general.
Understand. This will be quick. This will be quick. Um. I'm not against. Having, uh, a rental housing ordinance. I am against going. This quickly into it, and I think that the changes were made. At the behest of the council. You can talk about who met and when or whatever, but there were changes that, that were made. I think that there are more incentives that can be put into the regulation. The five-year, the five-year inspection thing. If, if you have zero violations, you shouldn't be inspected every five years. You should have the initial inspection. And then if there are violations that occur. Then your status changes. That's fair. You think, you think that these things are, are, are reasonable. They're not.
Mr. Nunez, we don't, we're not, we are, we are not going to relitigate this. You've had your opportunity to speak.
Okay.
And you're repeating yourself.
No, I'm not. I, they said I was against the reg-, I'm not against the regulation. I think it needs to be revised.
I don't believe Deputy Mayor Schultz said you were against anything. So please, let's just, you know. Not try to immune or impugn anybody's comments or motives. Thank you very much. Mr. Ramsey?
Alright, so we have, uh, on item four, a motion and a second. Um, this will not be a roll call, so. Uh, Mr. Mayor, if you want to call the.
Absolutely. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries.
And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. ERCP?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one item this evening. I move that. Borough Council consider the following reappointments to the Climate Action Commission. The terms for these appointments shall become effective immediately and shall expire September first, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, the appointments are Joel Hicks, Chair of the Commission, Mohammed Badacy, Projects and Estimates Team Lead, Sarah Markowitz, Community Engagement Team Lead. Tony Underwood, Planning and Analytics Team Lead, Carla Farrell, Zoning Team Lead. And Tamla Tressel, Resident at Large.
Mr. Stube makes, uh, a mo- motion to appoint to, for reappointments to the Climate Action Committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion on this item?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, just, just to keep everyone up to speed who's not necessarily, um. Active on, on the commission's work, um. We're, uh, this need to reapprove is sort of hitting us an interval as we're finishing up our climate action plan. Um, our, um. Plan to move forward, um, will, uh, reflect some of the priorities of the new, um. Uh, Sustainable Community and Economic Development Director who's coming in. We may have some positions that move around over time, but we'll keep the current, uh. Persons who are on this list, um, moving, um, as they have for at least a couple of months, but, um. We may have a, a few adjustments moving forward, so just want to keep everybody, uh, up to date on that. Thanks.
Alright, thank you, sir. Alright, unless there's any further comment, I'll go ahead and call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. The ayes have it.
That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Stube. Public safety. I move that council adopt an ordinance. Amending the code of the Borough of Carlyle adopted by ordinance number two zero three two and thereafter amended. With respect to chapter two four four vehicles and traffic to add one on-street handicap parking space at four thirty Fairground Avenue.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. This is an ordinance, so it requires a roll call vote. Madam Secretary, if you please.
Mr. Ramsey?
Aye.
Ms. Fulham Winston?
Aye.
Mr. Hicks?
Aye.
Ms. Landis?
Aye.
Mr. Schultz?
Aye.
Mr. Stube?
Aye.
And Mayor Scott?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much. And finally, I move that council authorize the closure of the one hundred block of Southwest Street. Along with approximately one hundred feet of Chapel Avenue, both east and west of Southwest Street on Saturday, October twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. From ten AM to three thirty PM for the West Street AME Zion Church to hold block party fundraiser with crafters, vendors, and the sale of soups. Approval shall be contingent upon the receipt of a valid certificate of liability insurance form, naming the Borough of Carlyle as an additional insured. And the applicant reimbursing the borough one hundred percent of the variable costs and ten percent of the fixed costs associated with said event. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. And that ends my report. Uh, public works.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two items tonight. I would ask Borough Council to approve the purchase of up to twenty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars in LED light fixtures. For streetlights at signalized intersections in the borough. From Shadler Yescow Distribution of Harrisburg, Pennsylvania. Through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Cooperative Purchasing Program, Co-Stars. Program.
Thank you. Ms. Fulham Winston moves to approve the purchase of LED light fixtures for streetlights at signalized intersections. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any further discussion on this item?
Just a comment, Mr. Mayor. Um, this and the subsequent item are. Right in the heart of the efforts where we are making with our utility providers, um, and. Borough staff to meet our greenhouse gas targets. Um, the theme I, I really want to direct everyone's attention to is. These are not trade-offs between economic progress and greenhouse gas mitigation, and both of these circumstances, um, information then provided. That shows that, um. All stakeholders are saving in this shift from one type of technology to another, um, and, uh, we are going to. You know, pass those savings on to our residents here, and, um, this is just a great example. Of how we can move forward on our goals and is truly is a win-win situation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alright, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I ask Borough Council to approve by resolution the execution of an amendment to the March thirteenth, twenty nineteen. Streetlight Services Agreement with PPL Electric Utilities Corporation. For the conversion of five hundred and six additional streetlights in the borough owned by PPNL. From high-pressure sodium to LED light fixtures, subject to the Borough Solicitor's satisfactory review and approval of the amendment.
Ms. Fulham Winston moves that council approve by resolution the execution of an agreement, uh, for our streetlight services with PPL. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries.
Uh, that completes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. We're now down to new business or public comment? Does anyone wish to address council on a matter of Borough Government? Anyone online wish to address council on a matter of local government?
There is not, Mayor Scott.
Alright, well, then, uh, next up, we have reports from council members and staff. We'll start down here at the end of the table.
Thank you, Mayor Scott. Uh, I just have a few items, um, uh, since Parks and Rec didn't have anything on the regular agenda, I just thought I, uh, remind everyone. Um, that the Halloween parade is coming up on October twenty-seventh, and you can still submit to be part of it up until the twenty-second of this month. You do have to go and pick up the application and drop it off directly at, uh, the community center. Um, and also that we had our Parks and Rec meeting and a skate park meeting last Thursday, and it was well attended and. Um, a lot of passionate skaters came out and gave a lot of great feedback. Um, and we are going to have, uh, mostly. Uh, finished finalized design for the next Parks and Rec meeting, and then we will also have our first discussion of the other park that will be along. Um, between B and C Street on Fairground Avenue, and that, uh, currently is looking more towards, uh, um, maybe some inclusive playground equipment, maybe some adult. Uh, uh, activity, exercise, um, maybe some swings for all ages. Um, so that would, it, it sounds, it's, it's different. Um, so we're trying to, uh, fill some different needs. Um, so we're trying to uh, fill some different needs in the recreation area with those two. Um, so I believe that that is November fourth at uh, seven PM.
Thank you. Deb?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Ramsey?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we uh, won't meet before this date occurs, but just want to remind everyone November second is Election Day. Uh, get out and vote uh, however you want. Uh, and when you're there, please thank the uh, people that work the polls and work at the county because they do a great job um, and spend long days making sure everything works. Thanks.
Yes, they do. And I want to thank council for their support of not only uh, the extra mile proclamation, but also for the advocacy letter to Senator Casey. And actually, Councilor Landis, this is a perfect bookend because when I first came on council back in two thousand something, uh, we tried to do a skate park and it was not successful. So I am so happy that now twenty years later, we're finally going to get there. So thank you for all your hard work. Deputy Mayor?
Uh, just to remind folks that uh, the Unity and the Community October Festival is taking place at Hope Station on Saturday from noon to five. It's an event that uh, showcases a variety of, of black-owned and other small local businesses um, from our, from our area. There's music, there's entertainment. Saddle Health uh, Center will be there. If you haven't gotten your vaccination yet, you, you can get, get it right there. Um, so don't, don't miss the event.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Mr. Stube?
I have nothing for this evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hicks?
Um, I have nothing this evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Alright. Borough Manager Armstrong, anything from you or staff?
Thank you, sir. I'm going to actually pass it over to Chief Landis, uh, just for um.
I saw that look. Yes, okay.
Just for an opportunity, uh, as you know, we are conducting outreach to the community. We're, we're looking for uh, uh, several officers to fill some slots. So Chief, do you want to talk on that a little bit?
Thank you, Mayor Manager. Um, Mr. Mayor, members of boroughs, councilman, audience, we are testing for new police officers October thirty-first, Halloween at the uh, Carlisle High School. So first of all, I'd like to invite you out there to see, because we're also on showcase. When we step out there, the, the police department will be there monitoring, proctoring the test. So we'd like to invite you out. And if you know anyone who's twenty-one years of age and of good character, please send them our way. Um, we created a new recruitment video that I was hoping that got, each of you may have got a chance to, to view. Um, we interviewed several prominent members of our community that spoke about the police department. So um, just thank you for your continued support and know that we are, you know, looking for good candidates at a time when they're having problems finding people to work anywhere.
What was the date and time of the?
October thirty-first, eight AM. So we're also hoping to get some of our officers out there because one another of the officers is getting married on the thirtieth. So all the ones that aren't hungover should be there on the thirtieth.
Let's hope. And, and Chief, where can folks watch that recruitment video or share it with their friends?
It, the, the recruitment video is online on, on the police website, Facebook, it's on the Borough page. And I've been sending to everyone I know, so I will send it to you on your, to your cell phone.
It's also on our YouTube page.
Thank you, Stephanie. Alright, there's some good promotion there for you, Chief. Good luck. Any, anything else from staff?
I would just like to uh, first and foremost, thank Lucretia Hufflefinger. If you notice, uh, Stephanie Taylor has Lucretia back there learning how to man our new uh, s- system that we have in place. And Lucretia's been very helpful over the course of the past. Uh, she's, she's always helpful, but she's really stepped up throughout um, from March forward with respect to assisting doing um, the hard processes. Uh, zoning hearing board, she's assisting uh, our interim zoning officer, Carla Farrell, with those and uh, with the planning commission. So just want to put, recognize her and her efforts. In addition to, as we all know, uh, she is our go-to person on solid waste and recycling.
Yes, she is. Alright, before we go to the solicitor, I want to recognize our new student ambassador who I believe is with us.
Yes, hello.
Yes, please go ahead. Um, this is a time where you can report on something or if you just want to introduce yourself, because I believe you are new.
Yes, um, hi, everyone. I'm the new Carlisle Student Borough Ambassador for Dickinson College. Uh, but I have no updates for tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, thank you. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Mr. Solicitor, anything? Alright, thank you very much. And, oh yes, I'd like to announce an executive session, which will have immediately following this meeting. The topics will be pending litigation and personnel. Other than that, thank you, everyone. We are adjourned.